Well, I would like to call this meeting of the Hamlet City Council's order. Um, we will have an invocation.
Yes, Linda Ross.
Praise God. Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have to come before you today. We thank you for the Spirit of God which is in this place. We thank you, God, that you're going to move in such a way that the hearts of the people that are here, those that will have an ear, will hear your voice even as those that are sitting on that panel begin to speak. Now, Heavenly Father, continue to open up our eyes of understanding that our spirit will be enlightened. And God, give us, I pray, the wisdom, that is my prayer on today, God, that you begin to give into the hearts of those that are sitting there, sitting in the midst of us, the wisdom to know how to go in and out in the midst of your people. So Heavenly Father, we thank you. We thank you for your presence. We thank you for your son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for the Holy Spirit that will lead and guide your people on today. Because the steps of a good man, the steps of a good woman are ordered by the Lord. So continue to order their steps as they begin to move for this, for Hamlet and for the residence of Hamlet. And Father, we forever give you the praise, the glory, and honor. And also, Father, we ask that the Spirit of healing begin to engulf this place as never before, that when the people begin to walk in, God, nothing will be missing or nothing be broken even in their lives because they walked into the presence of you. So Heavenly Father, continue to fill this place. Let every heart be encouraged. Thank you for the young people that are here. Your heart, you say, suffer the little children to come unto me, for such is the kingdom of heaven, such is the kingdom of God. So Father, we thank you that all things are working together for good, for them that love the Lord, and for them that are called according to your purpose. Thank you, God, for just giving us this opportunity, just to be able to stand and to call on you and to say that you are God, and besides you, there is none other. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
All right, item number three, adoption of agenda.
I make a motion we adopted.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Okay. Item number four, approval of consent, consent agenda.
Move that we adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Any opposed? So now, comments from attendees.
Is that B?
Ms. Zoe. You're up.
Number five.
Okay.
Well, all of my SGA members, please stand. Good evening, everyone. First, I would just like to take the time to acknowledge our mayor, Amy Gwynn, on behalf of the student, and, I mean, and council members. On behalf of the student government, we would like to say thank you for letting us attend the Hamlet City Council meeting this evening. Hi, my name is Zoe Isaac, and I am a mem, I am a student at Ninth Grade Academy. I was recently elected a member of SGA and appointed president. When I think about leadership and Women's History Month, I think about past Mayor Abby Covington. She paved the way for other women when she became the first female mayor of Hamlet in 1989 and cemented her mark on local women's history. She held that position until 1999, and she has more than forty years of service combined in Richmond County. Also, I would like to congratulate eight, Mayor Amy Gwynn on her election to mayor of Hamlet as this is Women's History Month. Through their great accomplishments, it shows a great example of what hard work and dedication will produce. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to see examples of leadership positions that we also may one day pursue. And we are so very grateful for this opportunity to attend this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So now we do picture.
So guys, this is, uh, most of their first time seeing, this is the Student Government Association for the Ninth Grade Academy. And for most of them, this is their first look at, um, any type of government regulated meeting. So we're very excited that they came and to observe, and thank you all for supporting them. And then we'll let them do a quick picture with our mayor and the city manager.
Good.
Thank you all for coming. Oh, I can't, they can't see me because he's so tall. That's good.
There you go.
We have a small gift for everyone. What does it take with you to remember the day?
She's missing out.
All right, item number six, new business. Front Street twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit ordinance.
I make a motion we adopted. Did a speed restriction, yeah, on Front Street. I'd say, I make a motion right offhand, I read it before, adopt a twenty-five mile-an-hour speed limit. I thought that's what it was anyway.
You would think.
Huh? You would think it's lower than that, even down to fifteen, because that's a, that's a tight road there.
Can you tell us why it brought, got brought up on the agenda?
Sure, yeah. So, um, actually, Mayor Gwynn had been reached out by a local business owner, reached out to Mayor Gwynn, and we talked about it. And there was no posted speed limit sign at all. And so when I researched the ordinance, it stated that, um, the general statute applies when, uh, specific ordinance has not been adopted. And the general statute for a city street is thirty-five miles per hour. This Front Street, we're all, we're all familiar with it, is between two twenty-five mile-per-hour zones, and it also has a ninety-degree turn in it. So what staff did was we, uh, put up the speed limit, uh, sign that records speed limit data to see if we, you know, what speeds were on average. There were not, in, in terms of, um, there were some high speeds, but, um, generally everything was around twenty-five miles per hour. And so in order to make it consistent with the area, um, we prepared the ordinance for your consideration today.
I, I make a motion that we lower it to fifteen or twenty. Miss, that's a tight turn there, folks, especially if you're meeting someone. Twenty-five may be too slow.
You can't get up no speed from Charlotte Street to that curve to the stop sign anyway or vice versa, another way. You can't get up.
I saw.
Oh, I'm sure somebody would.
Yeah, a lot of.
But ninety-nine percent of people coming down that street ain't going more than fifteen, ten, fifteen mile-an-hour. I, I go by there every day, just about.
Yeah.
And I know what my speed is.
Well, let's make it fifteen mile an hour.
But, but it's, nobody, I mean, uh, the, the worst thing about that street is the parking. It don't need to be parking on, it just need one side parking.
Oh, I agree with that.
But as far as speed, I mean, I don't care if it's thirty-five or twenty-five, because ain't, ain't nobody going thirty-five nowhere. You can't even get to thirty-five.
I think, I, well, you've, what you said true, but I think it ought to be fifteen there.
Well, they say twenty-five, that's a little bit.
Twenty-five.
Going twenty-five.
But we, yeah, but we can lower it.
I don't care nothing about that. Let's lower. I was just wondering, if it's in between two twenty-mile-an-hour zones, why would you come up with twenty-five? Why wouldn't it just be twenty to be across the board?
I believe it's between, uh, I believe Raleigh Street and Hamilton Avenue are twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken.
I was thinking, uh, I thought it was twenty. I thought all downtown streets were thirty, were, were twenty. The state says thirty-five on all, all streets, other, that's not posted, otherwise posted. It don't say it's gotta be thirty-five, it says thirty-five on all street unless otherwise posted. So it's thirty-five. Ain't, I, I don't see how anybody can get thirty-five anyway. But make it twenty-five, that's fine.
Split the difference to twenty.
Ain't, ain't nothing to be.
My recommendation would have been consistent, and if I made an error in that, I'll pull up the ordinance now.
I think all city, downtown is twenty miles an hour.
That's right.
Hamilton Avenue on that section is a state street. It's not a.
Yeah.
Public street, so it would be a state.
State street.
Speed limit. I mean, like you said, it's not a big deal. I was just wondering, I mean, if it was, if it was enough to be on the agenda for us to come up with it, I would just like to know, how did we come up with twenty-five?
That's a good question.
It was in an effort to make it consistent, but it appears I have erred, and it is twenty miles per hour.
Yeah.
So you want to change that to twenty?
What do you think, D.C.?
I was gonna say, council could do that tonight if you wanted.
Oh, we can do that tonight?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion? Yes. Twenty. All in favor of?
Did you make a motion?
Yeah, I did make a motion.
All right, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Didn't mean to spend so much time on that, but, I mean, I just, I was just trying to.
No, you did.
Line it up.
I was gonna say, it was a good thing you did.
Yeah, I'm glad you did. I apologize for there.
All right, item number seven, fee schedule amendment.
So, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This item before you is to set the fee for the new Lakeside Venue that we just purchased at the park, uh, so that we can begin reserving it. There is no fee in our fee schedule currently. Given that we were looking at the fees and researching fees of our facilities, our director of those facilities recommended that we increase our fees for the, um, the rotunda and the annex that we, um, currently already have. So in that research, she thought our fees were a little low, so she's recommended an increase, uh, to those fees as well as establishing a new fee of seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for a full-day resignation of the reserve, reservation of the Lakeside Venue facility.
So she's reducing the annex fee? Because it is seventy-five for three hours, and the recommendation is a hundred for three hours. That would be a reduction of fifty dollars.
The facility is, the annex is a separate room.
Right. Okay.
So the, the two-fifty is for the rotunda, and it's being proposed.
To increase the rotunda and decrease the annex?
No, the, the annex is also increasing to a hundred.
Oh, okay, I got you. I thought it was seventy-five dollars an hour for a three-hour reservation.
No.
I'm sorry. I beg your pardon. Yeah, I just, I thought it was seventy-five dollars an hour. We're on the top of our game tonight.
Yeah. So the base rate for, there's daytime and nighttime rates, but.
Yeah.
Uh, increasing the day and nighttime for both the rotunda and the annex. And of the rec, if it's, if it's not clear on the memo, there is an ordinance which outlines the, uh, fees that were recommended in the ordinance.
Just a quick question, don't we normally set fee schedules during our budget meetings? And why are we doing this one ahead of that time?
It's just a recommendation based on the market rate. Um, it's up to council if we want to do it.
We're already in the budget session, so.
And, and on that, Matt and I talked about this last week, there was some urgency to have something in place so we could start renting the Lakeside Venue if needed. And you're correct, you normally do it during the budget season, but that was a need that gave rise to doing it now.
Okay.
So we have a motion?
So we're gonna be renting the Lakeside Venue by the day, basically from nine until, nine AM until eleven PM.
Yeah, correct. The logic there being, um, you know, it gives staff some time to get in at eight, um, they hand over the keys by nine, and then, you know, your event would be over by ten, and then people could clean up and leave, you know, so.
They, they would be out by eleven.
Correct, yeah. That's, that's the proposal. But, you know, it's just a place to start. You know, we've never had a facility that we rented, um, quite this way, so, uh, but given the size and the challenges with turning over a facility that large, we thought a full day made the most sense. It would be very difficult to do two events in one day.
Right. I was just, I'm a little bit concerned, and primarily because of the difference between what I would consider its most competitive ones, which would be American Legion and the ballroom, is a difference of about two-hundred dollars. But, you know, I guess you're getting it for a lot longer, and it makes it more appropriate for larger events.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we had a lot of back and forth, Michelle and I did, um, and, you know, we just, we didn't wanna, our, uh, one of the things that we talked a lot about was we didn't want to undercut, you know, our other.
Right.
Facilities.
Right.
And it is the largest one that we're aware of, um, and we thought we'd start it. If we, if it's too expensive, the market will tell us that. If it's too cheap, the market will tell us that as well, and, um, maybe we'll adjust it again.
Depending on that, we can make adjustments.
Yeah, we can, yeah. Yeah, it's not, as Mr. McQueen pointed out, um, it's not typical to adjust fees mid-year. However, we were just doing the analysis, and, and it was the recommendation of staff, and, uh, we can certainly take whatever direction City Council provides.
Now, will this reservation include access to the kitchen?
Currently, yes. That's one of the things that we're gonna have to see how that works, and if there's an extra charge, what the cleaning is like, you know, what kind of regulations are we gonna have. We're gonna use our existing lease agreement that we have for the rotunda, which addresses many of the liability concerns. Um, and if we, we find that there's a need for a, a, a more nuanced agreement with those tenants, we'll adjust accordingly.
I really think that's probably a bigger concern that, that I have, rather than the cost, is the uses for it. We're gonna have to come up with something, or you could have something like that get out of hand real quick.
Absolutely.
There was a big push several years ago, people having pop-up, um, parties where they were actually violating the A L E laws and things like that. And I think if we don't have something ready to go in place, you could have some bad things going on.
The type of event that we'd rent it out to, is that what you're saying?
That, or some kind of, uh, rules and regulations on, um, either security and/or, um, I just, I just have a concern about that, just to say we're gonna rent it for X amount of money.
That's not.
And, and not have anything tied to it for protection of the people that's gonna be using it.
Yeah.
I think you can look maybe at the regulations for renting the coal, because they have incorporated security and, um, serving of alcoholic beverage and liability insurance and.
Yeah.
Things like that, just to, you know, to keep us covered. I, particularly because of the proximity to the water.
Yeah.
It's always neat some drunk.
Yes.
And, and just to tag onto what Councilmember Covington said, that's pretty common for local governments to rent out spaces to address things like alcohol and whether you have to have security. Um, so I think we could probably find something that could be a starting point for the city fairly quickly.
I think they had a situation just about, what, six or eight weeks ago, somewhere in the county.
It did.
Where they were selling alcoholic beverages, the Liberty maybe?
It did.
I know, uh, a year and a half, two years ago, it was a real big thing, and it wasn't just here, it was everywhere.
Uh huh.
There was a outfit that, um, basically was having, uh, parties at will, and he would just rent the cheapest place, and it was Katie bar the door, everything went.
Including the building.
Absolutely.
And so the, um, the issue of alcohol is one that is, I think these are all valid concerns and things we should be paying close attention to. Uh, the serving of alcohol is one that, um, is addressed vaguely in our existing facilities' rental reservation and use policy that we have. Profiting off of an event is, is prohibited without special exception from the city manager, so that's a good protection. Uh, but the serving of alcoholic beverages section says, "Will be allowed at certain locations with approval and permits when necessary, according to state and federal laws." Um, it goes on to say that it must be removed and, you know, distributed properly, um, and renters must provide proof of permit with application. That said, that does not give much guidance to staff about when we should or should not, or how are we going to allow, um, such permits or uses of such permits exist in our facilities. And I think that's, uh, something we need to, um, to, to consider carefully before allowing that to happen. So, um, at this time, you know, we wanted to set the fee, um, and we can certainly do more research and bring back a, a alcohol use, uh, specific, uh, section to add to this policy.
I think you need to incorporate some concern about security.
Yes, in some cases.
Alcohol is served.
In some cases, um, that I've been familiar with, if you have serving of alcohol, you're required to hire off-duty security, um, to, to provide security for your reservation.
One of the things you read out, it covered my big complaint, can't rent it and then charge people admission to get in.
Yes.
At some point, could you forward that policy to, to us?
Absolutely, I will, I will share it with you.
That will cut down on the party, Mr. Stewart.
What about, I have a question about if they had two groups that wanted to rent it for the morning and one for the night, or eve, about the cleanup, how would it, how would it go each group?
It's rented from nine in the morning until eleven at night, one a day.
Just rented for one day.
Only one a day, one event a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, nine AM till eleven PM.
Okay, good.
And we have some time in the morning. I mean, I'm not sure, we're, we're not sure exactly how much time it's gonna take to clean the facility, and, you know, so there's a lot of things we still have to figure out. That would be a fast turnaround, and I, we would probably address that at the time of reservation to determine if that reservation's even feasible, or what's gonna take to make that reservation happen in a sequential manner.
Got you.
So, do I have a motion?
Make a motion we approve the fee as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? All right, item number eight, appointment of Hamlet ABC Board Member.
Anybody gonna jump, or do you want me to start?
I make a motion that we select Chad Woodie.
And I second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed?
Is it just one?
Yes, yes. All right, I, item number nine, proclamation. For Women's History Month, whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and whereas women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force, working inside and outside of the home, and whereas women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation, and whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement, which created a more fair and just society for all, and whereas despite these contributions, the role of women has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in literature, teaching, and study of history. Now therefore do I, Amy Gwynn, Mayor of the City of Hamlet, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as Women's History Month.
Good.
All right. Onto city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'll just mention a couple of quick items. Baseball registration ends on March 25th, so if you're interested in participating, participating in our baseball season, please sign up by that day. Um, on Monday, March 18th, we will have the City Lake Cleanup from one to four PM. If you have time, please come and volunteer. Uh, everything will be provided as far as gloves and, um, trash bags and safety vests and all that sort of thing, to make sure that we have a good day of, uh, cleaning up our park at City Lake. And, um, excited to announce our public workshop number two for the Downtown Streetscape Project will be on, uh, April 12th. Uh, that's a Friday, that's the first food truck Friday of the season, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout for food trucks, and while people are there, we can get their feedback about, um, what they want to see in downtown, what they like, what they don't like, and, and hopefully, uh, create a plan for our downtown area that has good public input and amenities for everyone.
What time?
Uh, it will be during, we're gonna make a formal announcement soon. Uh, we're gonna have two sections, so we haven't set a time yet, but food trucks are eleven to seven. It'll be in the food truck window.
Okay.
Yeah. So we, we're still working on the fine details, but we're, um, we have set the date, so.
Okay, but you'll let us know the time.
Yeah, and we'll be advertising on social media, and, um, so.
All right. Mr. Martin?
Uh, well, it's getting baseball time, and I'm thinking in terms of the Hamlet American Legion baseball. This year, well, the opening game is gonna be May the 31st, and pre-game ceremony will be at six-thirty. I know it's a little early, but I want to remind everybody, and seven o'clock ballgame starts. Uh, it's gonna be a free event this year. Uh, it'll give the people a good opportunity to bring their family out to the ballgame, no charge. Uh, just come in and enjoy a good baseball game at the Hamlet Memorial Park, May 31st. The, uh, there's a lot of work going on up there, they're preparing the field, they're putting in a brand-new batting cage, uh, other, other things are taking place, and we're getting ready for it, and I think it'll be a great season. That's it.
All right, Mr. Sellers?
First of all, wish everyone a safe and healthy Easter, and remember our risen Lord. But I'd like to give a shout-out to our EMS at Hamlet. Last, uh, Monday, they came over, we had a, we had an incident there where a, a brother Mason, we were there to give the final rites and last rites to a fallen brother. But anyway, a, a fella fell out. He just lost his pulse, didn't have a pulse, and we were able to give, uh, Mike Burns, we had a seat, a couple of fellows, they had a new CPR, and they got a pulse back on him. Well, in the meantime, of getting him, the, the man collapsed in my arms. Anyway, they called 911, and in just a matter of, of a couple of minutes, they were there. Our EMS was, and Richard Laster and Trey Goodwin and his staff did an excellent job in bringing him back to life. And they got him stable enough and moved him directly to Moore County. And I talked to the man, and he, uh, he's Tracy Cough, ninety years old, and he came back, and he gives thanks to the EMS in our Hamlet. And I'd like for the people, when they see a EMS person, to give them thanks because they're very important, and they can save lives, and I'd like to shout out to them. And thank you for that. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Mr. Stewart?
I know we're live, so I wanted to say to the citizens, um, that don't get on the Facebook and social media, the Seaboard Festival, I see the applications are out. So for all those that are interested in doing any type of vending, please make sure that you go to the Seaboard Festival, um, website and fill out that application. Um, also recognize, appreciate all the achievements that women give to our country. Thank you so much. Want to thank Student Government Association of the Ninth Grade Academy for coming, and particularly thank you to the parents that brought them. So thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Covington?
Um, a couple of things. First of all, to tie in to what Oscar said, I think the City of Hamlet's in a really unique position as far as the maintenance of a local, um, response agency. We're the only town in Richmond County that still has a local response agency, and our citizens should consider themselves very fortunate to be able to, to have somebody right next door rather than coming from some other location throughout Richmond County. And I'm not demeaning what the ambulance service does, first help does. And I'm not demeaning what the ambulance service does, First Health does, but I'm just saying that having people here who know you and who are very close to you and can respond to you immediately is something that nobody else in this county has, and you should be very, very appreciative. And I like, Mr. Sellers said, you need to stop and tell them thank you, because they don't approach this job as a job, they approach it as a, as a mission. The second thing was that I want to thank the students from the Ninth Grade Academy and Student Government Association for being here. And I hope that you will aspire one day to change seats with me and take your position somewhere, not, maybe not in Richmond County, but someplace in a community where you live, be a part of what goes on, because this is where a lot of people have a tendency to say, "Well, I don't like this, or I don't like that." But you have to remember, particularly in smaller areas, that the people who live here are the people who determine what their community is like. And it requires a commitment from the people that live there to sit and make decisions that they think are in the best interest of their community. And this is a good place for you to start tonight, and I hope you will aspire to continue this interest until you're old enough to sit here. Thank you for being here.
Mr. McQueen?
Yeah, I just echo what they said. On the rescue thing and EMS, we've got probably the best in the state. And while we have that, just needs to be said, the county doesn't adequately fund what we spend on that in comparison to the, to the EMS through First Health, and I just want that to be made public as well. It's not even close to the reimbursement we get compared to what they're reimbursing First Health, and that's just not fair, and that's something that needs to be looked at, hopefully, whenever the new commission takes seat. Secondly, for you students, thank you for coming, just like everyone up here has said, and talked to you before you came in, what are you, what you're doing now is big, for that school is big, for your future is big. I know for a fact you got a really great leader of your organization in Mr. Stewart out there, and it's just so, it's such an honor to have y'all here tonight. You can look around, there's not that many people here, are there? There's not. A lot of people really don't take part in local government, and y'all are here, and that shows dedication on your part and as well as your families. And if you do get into government, and even whenever you're acting as a Student Government Association at school, just always remember one thing, just treat everybody fair.
Absolutely.
If everybody's treated fair, everything works. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. I just have a couple of things. I was invited to the Hamlet Senior Center last Friday for the Every Woman Has a Voice event recognizing National Women's Day. I brought the opening remarks, and it was a very nice event, had very good participation. They had four women who just talked about, you know, their careers and their lives. Two of them were, were rather non-traditional for women, so thank you for the Hamlet Senior Center for putting that on. And like I said, like everyone else has said, thank, thank you to student government for coming today, and come back anytime. You are always welcome here.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
March 18th, over at Old Torren, this will be a forum for the crosstile burning.
And it's gonna start at 6 o'clock, I think, or maybe 7:00, I'm not really sure on the time. But anybody that's opposing this crosstile burning over on, on North 177, it's very critical that you come and that your voice be heard, and if you don't give the opportunity to speak, of which if you're bit there and can sign up at 5:00, before 5:30, maybe you'll get asked to go to the podium. But come up and express your feelings about it, and just be there in body and in mind, and don't be afraid to speak up against it. Thank you.
I think, Matt, it would be appropriate maybe for you to just kind of give a little blanket statement during your remarks about what the position is for the City of Hamlet as far as this facility is concerned, and why, so that people know what their community facility is, I mean, the community position is, and why we have taken the position that we have.
Okay, all right. Anybody would like to motion to adjourn?
I make a motion we adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, students.